Because she knows, and I don't know if she even, she knows the ab-de-doo real well.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone. Mayor Heitke, members of the council, fellow staff members, our distinguished guests, family members of elected officials, the public at large here, and of course, our viewership on Channel 18. Tonight is what we call our reorganizational meeting. It is held by our municipal code that we are to meet on the first Monday after the first Tuesday for the ceremonies of swearing in the newly-elected officials. The city of Willmar did conduct a general election on November 7th, 2006, and we elected a new mayor for a four-year term and four new council members. And at this time, I would like Mayor Heitke to join me out here. Certainly so. Jerry, come on up. As city clerk and chief official in charge of voting, I would like to take this opportunity to present a certificate of election to you, Mr. Mayor. The certificate reads, "I, Kevin Halliday, City Clerk of the City of Willmar, do hereby certify that at the general election held in said city and state on Tuesday, being the 7th day of November 2006, Lester Heitke received the highest number of votes cast for the office of mayor in the city of Willmar State of Minnesota and was therefore duly elected to said office as appears from the official election returns in canvas on file in my office." Congratulations.
Mayor Heitke, it's my pleasure to administer the oath of office. At this time, I would ask that you raise your left, your right hand. I, Lester Heitke...
I, Lester Heitke...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
...the Constitution of the State of Minnesota...
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota...
...and the city charter of the city of Willmar...
And the city charter of the city of Willmar...
...and that I will faithfully execute and discharge the duties of the office of mayor...
And that I will faithfully execute and discharge the duties of the office of mayor...
...for the city of Willmar...
For the city of Willmar...
...county of Canio High, state of Minnesota...
County of Canio High and state of Minnesota...
...according to the law and to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the law and the best of my ability and understanding.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And now, you'll take this next? All right.
If I could also, at this time, have the four newly-elected council members from their Also at that November 7th, 2006 election, these gentlemen were elected, re-elected for another four-year term, and I want to take this opportunity to present them their certificate of election, which does say, "I, Kevin Halliday, City Clerk of the City of Willmar, State of Minnesota, do hereby certify that the general election held in said city on Tuesday, being the 7th day of November 2006, Bruce DeBleek, Ron Christensen, Rick Fagerley, and Doug Reese received the highest number of votes cast for the office of council member in their respective wards in the city of Willmar, State of Minnesota, and were therefore duly elected to said office as appears from the official election returns in canvas on file in my office." Congratulations, gentlemen.
This time, I will administer the oath of office to the four council persons. We always have a little issue when I ask you for your name, so after the word "I," why don't you just give me your individual name? So at this time, I'll ask that you raise your right hand. I...
I...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
...the Constitution of the State of Minnesota...
Constitution of the State of Minnesota...
...the city charter for the city of Willmar...
City Charter for the city of Willmar...
...and I will faithfully execute the duties and discharge, the duties of the office of city councilman...
I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of city council...
...in the city, for the city of Willmar, county of Canio High, and state of Minnesota...
City of Willmar, county of Canio High, state of Minnesota...
...according to the law and to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the law and to the best of my ability and understanding.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Dean Martin? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Thank you.
Those should be passed out and signed.
They go to Kevin. Kevin, they need to sign these after they was...
Yes, and we'll have them notarized. We can do that a little later.
Okay. Well, I wanted to thank Judge Donald Spilseth, one of our district court judges, for his time and for administering the oath of office. He's a busy man, and we certainly appreciate him coming over to the council chambers to carry out this duty. At this time, we're ready to begin the meeting, and I will now officially call the meeting to order. A roll call.
Mayor Heitke...
Here.
Councilmember Reese...
Here.
Christensen...
Here.
Anderson...
Here.
Swenson...
Here.
Gardner...
Here.
Dacken...
Here.
Fagerley...
Here.
DeBleek...
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Thank you, Kevin. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Each year, it's our practice and our tradition to invite one of our local ministers to come to the city council meeting at the first meeting of the year to offer us some words of encouragement and words of wisdom and prayer. Tonight, I'd like to welcome Reverend Sandy Hannawalt. Sandy is one of our ministers at Bethel Lutheran Church, and we welcome her to the council chambers tonight. Good evening, Sandy.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for inviting me to be here. Now, when you said "words of wisdom," that struck a little fear in my heart because my understanding is that all of the wisdom that is available to us is present around you right now. So, thank you for allowing me to be here. I do have a bit of a word from Psalm 29 that I'd like to read. We hear these words, "The Lord is the strength of His people; He is the saving refuge of His anointed. Oh, save your people and bless your heritage; be their shepherd and carry them forever." It is my trust and belief that the One who called you to your positions gifts you and guides you and gives you all the wisdom that you need. And I know there will be many moments in the year to come when you will have people who will doubt that wisdom to a great extent. And it is my hope for you and my prayer for you as leaders in our community that you will be guided by God and that you will know that God does not leave you alone in this great task. And I want to say personally, thank you to all of you for the service that you bring to this community. It is very much appreciated, and I think nobody who has not served on a committee or council like this knows just what you give and what you bring. So again, I want to say thank you. And I invite you to join me in this prayer. Almighty God, we lift before you all these people who govern our city. May those who hold power understand that it is a trust from you to be used, not for personal glory or profit, but for the service of this community. Drive away from us cynicism, selfishness, corruption, and grant, in your mercy, a just and honest government, and give us grace to live together in unity and peace through Jesus Christ, our Lord, we pray. Amen. God bless you in your service.
Thank you, Sandy. It is also the tradition of the city of Willmar that the mayor present a state-of-the-city address at the first meeting of the new calendar year. This is always a pleasure because it helps to organize my thoughts about where our city is positioned, the good things that have happened to the community, and our best look at what we see coming in the near future before this city council and mayor. So tonight, the state-of-the-city address for Monday, January 8th, 2007. To the citizens of Willmar and members of our city council, our city staff, and the media representatives, good evening. Tonight, we begin our 137th year as an organized city governed by our city charter. And tonight, as I speak to you, the citizens of Willmar, I will say that our city is certainly continuing to grow and develop. Willmar is one of 22 regional cities in Minnesota with a population between 15,000 and 25,000 people. I am proud to say that Willmar has achieved solid financial management that gives us the lowest city tax capacity rate among all 22 regional cities. This is achieved through steady fiscal management, careful decision-making by the city council, and provides a strong incentive for economic development. Willmar continues to have a growing property tax base, which allows us to meet our increased expenses without overburdening our citizens and businesses with high taxes. Our A1 bond rating, excuse me, helps in issuing bonds for development with lower interest Last year, Willmar experienced over $42 million in building permits, which shows the scope of development for residential, commercial, and industrial projects. Our local Chamber of Commerce informs us that we have a steady growth in minority-owned businesses. Five years ago, Willmar had two minority-owned businesses in this city. Following a survey conducted by the Chamber in the spring of 2006, 31 minority-owned businesses have been identified in Willmar. Some highlights from 2006 include the introduction of the Becker Market, a weekly street market that attracted crowds to downtown for a period of 12 weeks. This market was seen as being quite successful, and plans are being made to continue the market next summer. Our new airport opened in September, and it is seen as our new highway for the future. It has a 5,500-foot runway with clearance available for a 1,000-foot extension when funding becomes available. Many of our local pilots have built new airport hangars, and plans have been developed to build a 16-unit T-hanger complex. The T-hangers will be owned by the city of Willmar and leased to individual pilots. These T-hangers will be completed by May of 2007. The new airport also provides beautiful conference rooms and meeting space for groups, corporate leaders, and airport visitors. The Willmar Design Center completed its visionary concept and presented it to the city council. This new, comprehensive plan for downtown Willmar provides a blueprint for planning and renovation of the central business district and offers the city council concrete ideas on how to budget and plan for revitalizing downtown. This visionary booklet will be added to the city's comprehensive plan for future discussion. Our local option sales tax began in 2006 and has generated approximately $1.5 million and will continue until $8 million is raised. This money will be used to redevelop the old airport property into an expanded industrial park, join the Civic Arena and the Blue Line Arena, together with needed locker rooms, meeting space, and a new entrance for the entire complex. This money will also be used to expand hiking and biking trails to connect the city and county trails, and also to acquire a 60-acre tract of land on North Highway 71. Willmar continues to work with Canio High County and various state and federal agencies to plan and successfully complete the Grass Lake Restoration Project. Midwest Technology are expanding their facilities and businesses on their newly-acquired campus in northeast Willmar. They now own 95 acres of the former Willmar Regional Treatment Center. A new machine shop is being built on the campus that matches the historical appearance of the existing buildings. A new company, Feed Logic, is moving from Washington State to this campus. This company produces computerized livestock feeding systems, which precisely dispense feed and nutrients for cattle. It was a year of mixed results for Rice Memorial Hospital. The city-owned hospital completed its four-year, $52-million-expansion and renovation project this fall. The excellent staff and state-of-the-art facilities make it a leading regional health care provider we can be proud of. However, the hospital suffered its second financial loss in its history, resulting from lower inpatient and outpatient volumes. The hospital board and administration will be working hard in 2007 to improve their financial position. Their mission of restoring and promoting health will be developed through collaborating with affiliated community medical centers using a hospitalist, that's a physician who specializes in care of inpatients. The hospital board will also be partnering with the University of Minnesota School of Dentistry to provide training for dental students at a regional dental clinic designed to accommodate underserved populations. This effort will collaborate with Canio High County and surrounding counties, public health agencies, and surrounding counties' public health agencies, and will be an excellent source for recruiting new dentists to our area. Our Willmar Municipal Utilities has also had a very productive year. They completed construction of a 69,000-volt transmission line through the old airport and constructed the electric system at the new airport. They also completed replacing the roof on the southwest water reservoir and began developing a local wind generation resource project. Over 1,300 customers enjoyed the Public Power Week Open House on October 3rd. Big plans are in place for 2007. Rate studies, extended facilities near 19th Avenue Southeast, underground conversion efforts in residential areas, and automated meter-reading technology are among the planned activities. Also, a new general manager will begin working soon. I'd like to personally say a word of thanks to Mr. Mike Nichols, our current general manager, who will be leaving his post in the near future after many years of public service to this city. Willmar also appreciates the 28 years of political service that Dean Elton Johnson gave to this community. Dean served on the Willmar City Council, the Minnesota House of Representatives, and the Minnesota State Senate. His leadership provided millions of dollars in state appropriations and financial incentives for economic development in our community. I wish Dean success in his new involvements. Willmar lost one of its outstanding citizens on December 11th. Earl B. Olson, founder of Jennie-O Turkey, died at the young age of 91 years. Our city is grateful to Earl for his long-term investment in our community with his business sense, his development, and especially his philanthropy. Willmar loves its coffee. Willmar now has at least 10 independent coffee shops. I wish them all well. They surely provide caffeine and energize citizens throughout the city. Willmar welcomed Best Buy this fall and also broke ground for the new Super Walmart. North American Bank has opened its stores, and Bremer Bank has relocated to Willmar Avenue. Finally, on December 20th, 2006, Willmar was recognized by NBC Nightly News with a two-minute story on our efforts to be an inclusive community. Willmar now has over 37 different cultures represented in our community of 19,000 people. 31 percent of the students in the Willmar School District come from minority backgrounds. An estimated $80 million in revenue is recirculated by minority employees. And our local high school cross-country team won its second state championship anchored by several Somali students. Our All-America City status continues to be recognized nationwide for the many things we do well locally. Our future is bright for 2007. A new 16-bed state-operated psychiatric hospital is being planned to open by the fall. Sites are still under consideration. The new Super Center Walmart will have over 200,000 square feet of retail space. Additional retail spaces will be available on the south and east sides of this property. New streets are being developed to accommodate the increased traffic expected in southeast Willmar. A new business, Brick &amp; Stone, will be located on East Highway 12 and 25th Street Southeast. It will provide both interior and exterior building supplies. Ralco Manufacturing is building a new freestanding production facility in the current industrial park. Phase 1 of the new industrial park is being planned and engineered. This will provide land and infrastructure for new and expanding businesses. A new soccer complex will be designed and built this spring and summer. Located next to Roosevelt Elementary School, it includes two soccer fields, bleachers, and lighting for nighttime events. Willmar now has over 140 participants in various soccer leagues, including teens and young adults, and this is a very popular sport, especially among our minority youth. The Willmar Curling Club is experiencing growth and activity. A recent curling tournament just this weekend at the Civic Center brought in 12 teams from around the state of Minnesota. Perhaps our mild winters will encourage more people to investigate the sport of curling. Fundraising efforts in November will bring a jet airplane to our new airport. This F-14 Tomcat fighter plane will be used as a static display in front of the airport terminal. Plans are continuing to develop a mercado in downtown Willmar. This will include 22 small businesses with six food vendors. The Willmar Canio High County Economic Development Center is taking the lead role in organizing plans and finding money to launch this multicultural business center. Many comments have been made about the increase in train noise. Quiet zones for railroad crossings are being investigated, and funding is being sought through our federal lobbyists to address these concerns. In addition, there is some preliminary discussion about establishing a railroad loop on the west side of Willmar to allow trains to branch off to the northwest without having to come through Willmar. The new wastewater treatment plant is being designed, and construction has begun for the sewer lines that will eventually lead to the new plant located four miles west of Willmar. This project will take approximately three more years to complete. Finally, two churches are expanding their facilities. The First Baptist Church is building a new, a new youth center to be completed this summer. The Assembly of God Church has nearly completed its youth center, which will be opening soon this winter. Both churches are welcoming youth to their new facilities and various ministry programs. We can all be proud of the beauty of our community, its growing tax base, our efforts in working with cultural diversity, and maintaining a sound fiscal foundation for services and programs throughout the city. Willmar will continue to work in partnership with Canio High County and the Willmar School District to coordinate services and make the best use of our tax dollars. It is my pleasure to serve as mayor of this all-America city. I thank all the citizens of Willmar for your support. I will strive to represent you and our city in a professional, a positive, and a productive manner. Thank you very much.
Well, there's a lot going on in Willmar. We are ready to move on in our agenda now, and we are down to number eight on the agenda. And that's any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda tonight. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief note regarding my attendance at a conference at the end of the month. I'd like to add that to the miscellany.
Okay. I have a couple of things to add under miscellany. I want to make some announcements about the Somali celebration on Monday, January 15th. Also, we need to look at a new resolution for funding for the F-14 Tomcat, and also a resolution for the wastewater treatment plant to accept some funding for that wastewater If there's no other changes in the agenda, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to have any discussion or questions about the consent agenda? Tonight, that consent agenda includes the minutes from the last city council meeting on December 18th, the board minutes from Rice Hospital for December 13th, the utilities' commission minutes of December 26th, the planning commission minutes of December 27th, December building inspection report, the police commission minutes for February 6th, 2006, the cable advisory committee minutes of December 14th, the airport commission minutes of December 19th, and then we have some applications for an exempt permit. This includes Pheasants Forever, VFW Post 1639, and Surtoma Club. If there's no questions, those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Now, we, we will move on to number 12. We'll come back to number 11, Ron. Number 12 is the Willmar City Council Open Forum. Is there anybody who wishes to address the council or the mayor tonight? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to number 13, which is the Community Development Committee Report for December 28th, and I will call on Councilmember DeBleek.
Mr. Mayor, I was not able to attend that meeting, so I would like to defer that report to Vice Chair... to Vice Chair Cindy Swanson.
Okay, Cindy, would you handle that for us, please?
Uh huh. The first item we discussed was a major project land sale issue. Staff presented to the committee background information on efforts to work with a major company in developing a large tract of land in the new portion of the industrial park. The project being proposed would include the construction of over 250,000 square feet of production and distribution facilities, and an estimated 250 to 300 new jobs. Major issues identified by the business in their plans include roadway impediments, land acquisition and availability, wastewater treatment capacity, and development incentives. The major issue that staff has struggled with is that of the land acquisition. Staff requested that the committee recommend to the council that staff be authorized to present a proposal to the company that would write down the cost of the needed 40-acre tract of land for an amount as low as a dollar. It was noted that this action was not unprecedented in that the city had done several land write-downs and recovered some or all of that cost through tax increment financing. It was noted that staff had initiated a process to solicit state participation in the project by forgiving the negotiated debt on the former airport land. Staff concluded by saying that the magnitude of the project and the potential for significant employment and tax-based gains made this a very good project for the community and one where a land write-down would be justifiable. A motion was made, seconded, and passed to recommend -- to authorize staff to negotiate the sale of the tract of land for prices low as a dollar.
And you're making that?
I'll make that motion.
Second. We have a motion, and it's been seconded, to authorize staff to negotiate the sale of this 40-acre tract of land for a price as low as $1. Comment or discussion about this? I have one question. Is this in any way tied to whether or not the state would renegotiate the amount of money that they want the city to pay back to the state for the airport land? Is it tied together in any way?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the issue of the $1 is to what you're referring?
Right.
No, sir, it isn't.
So the city could offer this irregardless of what the state says about the value of the land?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other comments about this? Those in favor of this motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Epstein. Go ahead.
Second, we discussed a 2005 Bonding Bill grant. Staff informed the committee that the grant agreement for the 2005 Bonding Bill grant had been prepared by the state of Minnesota and was awaiting execution by the city. This is the grant that provides $700,000 as airport land reimbursement and $300,000 for the construction of the city's tea hangar. A motion was made, seconded, and passed to recommend that the mayor and the city administrator be authorized to execute the grant agreement on behalf of the city, and I'll make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second that the mayor and city administrator be authorized to execute the grant agreement for the 2005 Bonding Bill. Further comment about this? Kevin?
Mayor Hakee, members of the council, I realize it's written as a motion, but it is a grant for the state of Minnesota, and it needs to be a resolution.
Resolution.
So we have prepared one. What do you call it? Require a roll call vote?
Okay, do you want to read the concluding sentence of that resolution? Do you have it handy or not?
I don't have it handy.
Okay, but it's been written?
It has, and it probably is part of this one-inch fat thick.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, the resolution will conclude simply as stated here in the motion that the mayor and the city administrator be authorized to sign the agreement.
Any comments from the council members on this? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Baggerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
There was no further business at that meeting, so I'd like to make a motion to submit and approve these minutes.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file these minutes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next are the Public Works Safety Committee Report for January 2nd. Councilmember Reese?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. The first item on the agenda was in regards to the airport and the hangar relocation. Mr. Mark Kanake of MidCentral Concrete was at our committee meeting and answered questions in regards to additional concrete work during the relocation of the hangar for Wilmer Air Service. Mr. Kanake had submitted a change order requesting a $12,480 amount for additional concrete of 100 cubic yards, and then also some additional pumping costs, winter acceleration charges, and some labor charges. The concrete aprons that are extending on both sides of the hangar foundation were required to have a 1.1% slope from the building to the taxiway. There was confusion when these were staked, and there was a five-inch difference in elevation of the slab. The possibility of additional gravel and redoing the in-floor heat was discussed, but instead of using additional concrete, it was decided that with the weather conditions changing as rapidly as they were at that time, to move on and pour the additional concrete. At the time of our meeting, Mr. Mayor and council members, we did not have a resolution to this. However, since our meeting, staff has met with Mr. Kanake from MidCentral Concrete. And as a result of those meetings, I would introduce a resolution for a change order not of $12,480, but of $11,680. And as you see in your packet, there is a breakdown on the developments in that pore, and essentially, Mr. Kanake is giving us an $800 break on the costs and from what was outlined to us at our meeting. So, Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution for that change order at the amount of $11,680.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a change order request in the amount of $11,680 related to concrete -- to a concrete slab at the hangar relocation. Further comment about this? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mick, evidently, Mark was okay with this. It was a negotiated thing, or did he object to it at all?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you'll see a summary from Mark Kanake included in the packet, and he is suggesting there, as a result of his conversations with some of our staff, that he would reduce his labor amount by that amount. So it's an agreed-upon settlement.
I know that it was through no fault of his own that this got done, and the extra concrete was there. I guess I don't -- I personally don't feel that he should renege on any of the labor because he didn't make the decision. The decision was made for him to go ahead and do this, and I just, being a contractor, I know what they go through on it.
So there was no objection at all from him on this?
No.
Who came up with 800? Was it you, or did he, or did you?
It was a conversation between the contractor and our staff. There were extenuating circumstances. I think that the weather and the timing of the project, there were some contractor responsibilities here, and I think he's acknowledged to some extent that it perhaps could have been done differently, or that it could have been done in a more timely fashion. I think he's agreeable and indicates so in his summary letter that you have in your minutes.
So he was happy when he left the meeting?
He's -- I was not at that meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions about this? I have a question. Who was responsible for the mistake? How did that happen?
Well, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if you classify it as a mistake. There were some elevations that were shot, and people were maybe anticipating that a pore would be based off one elevation, when in fact, it was based off a second resulting in a gap or a void, if you will, that needed to be dealt with. And the decision was made on the spot because of the weather conditions to complete the project with an additional pore concrete, which accounted for that additional amount. And we were involved in that decision on the construction site, so we feel that we have some responsibility as well.
Where would this money come from, then?
Well, our intent would be to pursue reimbursement through federal and/or state airport grants. In the event we don't have any money left in that particular grant, the hangar relocation grant, we will ask MINDOT or the FAA to approve using funds from other grants that are still open, and if those aren't allowed, then we would have to revert to our local option sales tax to pick it up.
Anyone else here on the council? All right, this is a resolution, then? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dockin?
No.
Baggerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
The resolution passes.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would also introduce a resolution to change the budget accordingly to reflect these changes.
Second. We have a motion and a second to change the budget to reflect this adjusted amount that we just passed on. Further comment? Is that another resolution? Resolution, roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dockin?
No.
Baggerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
The resolution passes.
The next item was in regards to the wastewater treatment plant relocation, and the committee was briefed on the recent activities through the month of December 2006. Craig Holmes from Donahue &amp; Associates met with the city staff to review the draft infrastructure management plan, and that plan will now be finalized. The 30% complete drawings and documents were distributed to the committee, and a workshop was conducted with city staff. And Donahue is preparing an updated elevation of alternative conveyance routes through to the new wastewater treatment facility. Work on the environmental assessment worksheet and the NPDES permit for the conveyance infrastructure, and also, the new plant was described in the facilities plan, and that is complete. Submittal of these items is being withheld until the conveyance route issues are resolved, and that we will be dealing with at our next Public Works Public Safety meeting. The 2007 federal funding request package is completed and has been reviewed by city staff and also by our lobbyist, Church &amp; Associates, and plans are being made for a February 2007 visit with our federal elected officials and staff in Washington, D.C. And this item is for information only. The third item was in regards to our upcoming 2007 improvement report, and staff went over the proposed list of improvements for 2007. The list included reconstruction, overlay, new construction, street lighting, and some miscellaneous projects. Staff reviewed the listing of the streets to be constructed and reconstructed, and also the miscellaneous items, and the total estimated cost for those improvements is $5.5 million. The improvements include reconstruction of several residential streets, the overlay of 19th Avenue Southeast from First to Fifth Street Southeast, and Ninth Street to Lakeland Drive Southeast along Country Club Drive Northeast. New construction of residential lots is also being proposed by a number of developers. No plats or plans have been reviewed by staff as to date, but street lighting is also included for the new developments. Underground utility work and road construction is planned for the realignment of Wilmer Avenue from Trunk Highway 40 to US 12, along with the demolition and runway reclamation. Underground utility work is also planned along the realignment route of County Road 5, and walk paths are proposed to be extended, and along with that, crack sealing and seal coat maintenance would be a consideration -- or would be done in the 2007 project. Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution to order the preparation of the improvement report for the 2007 improvements.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a resolution that calls for the improvement report for 2007 improvements. Further comment about that? Councilmember Dockin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can this be altered or changed at a future date? In other words, is this project list poured in concrete?
Excuse the pun, Mr. Administrator.
It's his fault, actually. No, it's not. It can be changed at some point in the future, either adding to the project or subtracting any of those activities.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Councilmember Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Baggerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The next item was in regards to the Minnesota's phosphorus reduction and also the total daily maximum load grant applications, and Craig Holmes from Donahue &amp; Associates informed the committee that he had prepared two separate resolutions that needed to be passed by the council in regards to these grant applications. The resolutions document the city's intent to proceed with the construction of the new wastewater treatment plant while protecting its opportunity to secure a phosphorus reduction and total daily maximum load grant from the state of Minnesota. Mr. Mayor, first of all, I would introduce a resolution to authorize the resolution for the phosphorus reduction grant.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a resolution to authorize this resolution for the phosphorus reduction grant. Further comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Baggerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Next, I would introduce the resolution, Mr. Mayor, for the total maximum daily load grant.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a resolution for the tally -- for the tally -- for the total daily maximum load, or TMDL, grant. Comment about that? Roll call.
Councilmember Dockin?
Aye.
Baggerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
As we go through these minutes, if you recall, item number three was in regards to the 2007 improvements, and the planning for that is underway, and it is the intent of the city to include all administrative and other costs in the project in the bond sale, and the Internal Revenue Code bond regulations require a municipality to declare its intent to reimburse itself for those costs and do so prior to the sale of the general obligation improvement bonds. So I would introduce a resolution, Mr. Mayor, to adopt a resolution of intent to reimburse for the 2007 street improvement project.
Second. We have a motion, and it's been seconded, for a resolution that describes the intent to reimburse the city for the 2007 street improvement project. Comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Baggerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution also passes.
Mr. Mayor, that is the last agenda item. Unless there's questions, I will move to file the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file the minutes. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Next is the consideration of bids for the 2007 towing requirements. Chief, welcome. Please explain that for the council, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. You have in front of you a packet that was handed out earlier that deals with 2007 towing. There's really two issues we'd like you to consider here. One is the 2007 tow contract, and the second is the cost to retrieve a vehicle from the impound. The first issue, the 2007 towing bids and contract, as you can recall, in December we solicited quotes for towing and received one quote that was over $50,000, which required us to go through the bidding process. The bid was opened on the 5th, and as you can see, it was Ed Service Center, longtime contract provider for us, the only bidder. And it was for basically an increase of $15 per vehicle. It would be staff's recommendation to adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Ed Service Center on behalf of the city for towing services in 2007, per that bid.
Thanks, Chief. Council?
I would introduce the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded, to accept the bid from Ed Service Center in sales for our towing services in the city of Wilmer. Further comment about this? Roll call?
Councilmember DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is the consideration of a request.
Mr. Mayor.
Chief.
If we could deal with the second issue there, and that would be the minimum cost to retrieve a vehicle from the impound lot, there's some additional information in your packet there.
All right.
But with that $15 increase in the tow cost to Ed Service Center, staff would recommend that you pass that $15 increase on to the vehicle's owner when they're retrieving the vehicles from the impound. That would increase the minimum cost to retrieve a vehicle from the impound from $120 in 2006 to $135 in 2007. And in your package, you'll see a breakdown and a little chart there of historically what we have gotten or received for vehicles being retrieved from the impound. And then the bottom chart there shows how the breakdown would occur if you left the minimum amount at $120 now instead of going to $130 or a different amount. It would be staff's recommendation that you pass that $15 on and set the minimum amount to retrieve a vehicle from the impound lot at $135.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Is that a simple motion? That is a resolution. I would introduce the resolution raising it to $15, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution which increases the minimum cost to retrieve a vehicle from the city impound lot to $135. Further comment about this? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, how many a year of these do we do?
We tow 700, more or less, depends upon snow conditions, et cetera. 2006, we towed slightly less than 700. Other years, we've towed a little over 700 vehicles a year.
And although those 700 had to pay the fee to get their car out?
No, we wind up selling about 200 of those 700 at public auction because people do not pick them up, or they were abandoned vehicles, or we took them through a forfeiture process, et cetera.
Do we know, is there a percentage of those that are like college students?
We don't have an age breakdown, but approximately 2/3 of the vehicles that we tow are towed because of driving behavior, whether it be drunk driving, driving without a license, driving without insurance, things of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments here? Chief, do you get a lot of arguments about this? Do the people that handle this impound lot, do they get a lot of flack for this?
Well, nobody likes to have their vehicle towed, but, you know, I guess on a scale, probably not as much as you might think because many other communities charge considerably more than that. If you go in the metro and get your vehicle towed, you're going to pay a lot more than that on top of the ticket.
It gets to be an expensive night.
Yes, it does.
All right, any other comments here? We have a motion and a second, Kevin? That's already been set up? Roll call?
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next, we have the consideration of a request for reapportionment of special assessments. Who's handling that? Oh, Megan, good, welcome. And please explain that for us.
Mr. Mayor and council, JNC Enterprises of Central Minnesota requests that the assessments against their property be reapportioned to reflect the new plat, Hidden Valley Estates. Staff recommends adoption of the resolution, reapportioning the assessments as requested.
Thanks, Megan. Megan, who is JNC Enterprises? Who is that?
It's Michael Cruz and Steven Jennings.
Oh, this is over on the far west side?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Council?
I'll introduce to the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded, to reapportion special assessments on property for JNC Enterprises. Further comment about this? Those in favor? Oh, this is a resolution again.
Yes.
Roll call?
Councilmember Christensen.
Abstain.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
The resolution passes. Next is the consideration of a preliminary and final plat called the Banks addition. Megan, are you, can you explain that again?
Mr. Mayor and council, Banks addition is a one-lot plat splitting a twin home down the center. Three plats put the property line down the middle of the twin home, which has already been constructed for several years, allowing either half of the home to be sold. The plat is just a simple split, and as such, we'll have the preliminary and the final plat done consecutively. One condition the commission, the planning commission, put on was to have an agreement regarding the maintenance of the home. And that draft has already been submitted to staff and will be recorded with the final plat. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary and the final plat.
Thank you. Council?
Don't move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this preliminary and final plat for the Banks addition. Further comment? Those, or Councilmember Fagerly?
In reading the planning commission, there's not a legal firewall in there between the two units?
The home was built before the current building code. It was built in the '50s. So it meets the standards that it was built at, but it doesn't meet today's firewall standards, as do other twin homes built at the same era.
In the '50s? We have other twin homes in town?
There's others on Wilmer Avenue down the street from this one, yes.
Okay. What happens if they sell it and they try to get a mortgage, and mortgage company finds out there's no firewall there?
There is a separation wall. We did consult with the building inspector on this wall. It is acceptable the way that it is, and it is covered through the maintenance agreement should anything happen to dividing wall for repair.
It just seems like we're kind of cutting corners here. Aren't we supposed to be looking out for the safety of the residents?
It meets the same standards that the other, I mean, as it does now. There's people living in it now. It'll simply be sold off on either side.
But it's a rental unit now, owner occupied. Transfer it, it'll be two separate units that are attached. Right?
Mr. Mayor, I think the point that was being made is that it does meet code under
or pre-existing properties.
So I don't know that, I wouldn't necessarily say we were cutting corners.
Well, it doesn't meet the standards of today.
No.
Standards of today is supposed to be safer buildings, structures.
And anything built today would have to meet those higher standards.
What happens if they remodel it? What happens then?
I don't know. I thought she answered your question.
I'm just asking if we let them split it now, and they go in and totally gut the house, they're changing, they're altering it. So do they have to put in a new firewall then?
I believe under the new code, they would have to. They'd have to bring it up to fire detection, CO2 detection, when they remodel. I think if they did one, they'd have to do both of them. That's my opinion.
And who's going to inform the new buyers of that? I'm trying to look out for the people in the future.
If a building permit was issued, then it would be picked up in that code review.
Well, it should be, but I kind of have my doubts, so.
Anything else, Rick?
No.
Anyone else want to comment on this? This is a motion, Kevin.
Correct. We have a motion and a second.
Okay, the motion is to approve this preliminary and final plat for the Banks addition. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. At this point, I'm going to turn the gavel over to Councilmember Christensen because once a year, we have a need to convene the Fire Code Appeals Board for Candyoy County. So, Councilmember Christensen, there's a gavel, and apparently you need to convene this committee, which is the city council.
I believe we have to recess first.
Formally recess the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Let's have a motion to recess the city council meeting.
Don't move.
There's a motion, and it's been seconded, to recess the city council meeting. Now, Ron.
I will hereby open the Fire Codes Appeal Board. We haven't had this for quite a few years, as a matter of fact, Marv. This is your first time, and this is the first time I've done it.
This is the first time for me, too.
We are here as a request from Martin Mechanical Design, and they're requesting a fire code variance, and I will turn it over to our chief, Marv Calvin, to explain this to the board.
In front of you, you have a request from Martin Mechanical Design for a fire code variance to allow a six-inch fire sprinkler main to be entered into a building, and also for the elimination of the requirement of a post-indicator valve to allow the fire department to control the water service to the exterior of the, from the exterior of the building to the building. The code request that they are presenting does meet the state code, although on January 20th of 1993, city council did approve a code basically more stringent than what the state code is, which requires an eight-inch main to come into the building. So that, therefore, because it does meet the state code requirements, but does not meet our local code or the local fire marshal policies adopted by council, it's being brought to you as a variance request from them. So the petitioner is asking to have you allow them to have the six-inch fire sprinkler main and also the elimination of the post-indicator valve.
Thank you, Marv. From what I understand, then, they built the building and put in the water according to the state code. So they do meet the Minnesota state code for the size of line going into the building and for not having the post-indicator valve, correct?
That is correct.
And our council back in 1993 had made a policy of an eight-inch valve plus the post-indicator valve. Now, at that time, that might have been the state requirement also. We don't know that.
I'm not aware if that is indeed the case or not.
Okay, but it is more stringent than the state code, and they do meet the state code, so technically, they meet the code but not by our policy.
So they meet the code, but they do not meet the policy. That is correct.
Okay. Does the board understand what we're here for? And do you have any questions?
I have a question. Does the state code supersede local policy?
Local policy can be more restrictive, but not less restrictive. So you can be more restrictive, but not less restrictive than what state code is. And that's what you are, is you're more restrictive than what the state code is by policy.
When the engineering company designed this, my feeling is they went to the state code book and they designed it to the state code, knowing that it would pass theirs. This is one of these policies that the city maybe needs to review and probably change. I personally don't see any reason why we need to be stricter than the state code, especially on this building. We're talking about a trench of over 100 feet long with an eight, a six-inch line, and if they were to redo it, they'd have to dig it up and put an eight-inch to come up to our policy. But that's my feelings, so.
What kind of a building is this?
It's a garage.
Who's garage?
Public Works Garage for the county. Here.
Okay. So why was the city's policy put in place, then? There must have been a reason for that. To provide more water faster for potential problems?
Well, at the time, Mr. Mayor, we can only surmise that it was the opinion of the council and staff that that higher standard was appropriate. Whatever drove that decision, I guess we don't really know unless we could talk to the council.
And that may have been the state code at that time. We don't know that either.
Yeah.
We may have been just meeting the state code, and since then, since 93, 13 years ago, they may have reduced that code, seeing that there was no need for the post-indicator valve. Post-indicator valve is a valve on the outside of the building that shuts the water off to that building, so when the fire department pulls up and they plug into the water, they get more pressure. So the pressure isn't on inside the building. They can shut it off outside the building. However, those valves, my understanding is that a lot of those don't function these days. They're rusted or froze up. So they've been putting those valves behind a door in a warm area on the exterior of the building, so they, when they come in, if there is a fire, they can open the door, go in, shut the valve off at that particular place, and then make sure that they have all the pressure to the water. As far as the line coming into the building, we require eight-inch. They put in a six, up to the state code. When it comes into the building, they reduce it again down to a four-inch main. Is that correct, Marv?
It is correct.
And that's done in most buildings of this size. They also installed a two-inch water line only to their water, not fire suppression, but to the rest of the water requirements of the building next to the six-inch. So in essence, they got a two-inch and a six-inch there, and they're separated, one for fire suppression and one for water needs of the rest of the building. I think I've explained it. Any other questions?
What does the county want here? What do they want to do with it?
The engineering firm is requesting a variance, so that, because they do not meet city policy that says they have to have an eight-inch valve, or, excuse me, an eight-inch water line and a post-indicator valve on the exterior of the building. They're requesting a variance so they can leave the building as is and not dig it up They're requesting a variance so they can leave the building as is and not dig it up and put in a new line. Rick, you had a question?
Yeah. Were they notified that there's a hearing here tonight?
Yes, they were.
And they didn't want to come, or?
My understanding in my conversations with them early on is that they felt the letter would speak for itself in the absence of, I guess they felt the letter would speak for itself.
Okay.
And nothing else to add.
Were they required to ha- or did we do a plan review on it?
Yes, we did.
And was that noticed on the plan review?
It was noticed on the plan review. It was marked in the plan review, but it was missed when it was transferred from Randy's office over to the builders, is our understanding, when it went to Martin Mechanical.
I mean, the city marked it and said, "This is what we need."
That is our policy. They are given a copy of our policies and it was, my understanding, talking with the building official, he did mark it that it needed an eight-inch water supply. He also did mark it that it needed a post indicator valve. That is correct.
Okay. And then how many inspections did you do out there? You weren't able to pick it up before it was finalized?
I went out there for the final. I found it on the final.
No one did it before then?
I was not in and checked the sprinkler system prior to that, no. I'm speaking for myself here.
Then have we altered anything out at the airport that didn't meet code on any buildings out there?
We did not require them to sprinkle their buildings, but we required them to put in the main and then at the time that there is water available, we are requiring them at that point to hook up to the water and then sprinkle the building. So we have not said they don't have to sprinkle. We just said that because there's no water available, we are not requiring them to sprinkle at this time.
They can occupy the building now out there.
That is correct.
Okay.
They had to put an alarm system in and they have monthly inspections.
Okay. Councilmember DeBleek, you had a question?
I guess my question, Rick kind of touched on a little bit, but Martin Mechanical Design was informed during, through the plan review that there were, that the six-inch main did not meet the requirements of the-
I believe the Architective Record was notified. I'm not sure if Martin Mechanical was advised. I would, I guess I don't know that answer for sure, but the Architective Record was made aware of it.
So they chose not to implement the-
My understanding in talking with Martin Mechanical Design is they called down to the state. The state told me they only had to put a six-inch in, so that's why they put the six-inch in. That's what they told me on site when I asked them how come they put in a six-inch and not an eight-inch. They said they talked to the state and the state said they could do it.
They didn't check with our building inspector at that time?
Not to my knowledge. They did not contact me.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, I think I understand part of the rationale behind their request. They're arguing that the, that they have not reduced the safety element in the building. In fact, they think that they've actually enhanced it and one of the, and help me with this if you would. One of the things that they're saying is that since 1993, there are some technological advances that allow, for example, on computer to design better and more efficient, for example, sprinkler systems and fire safety systems in these buildings today. Is that how I understand it?
Yes, the computer model fire protection now where, back then, they didn't do computer modeling. Computer modeling allows them to put smaller sized supplies in through these buildings and thus reducing the size that's required for the, for the supply into the building, which then goes to the branch mains. Again, as you stated and in their letter, they say they have a 12 to 31% safety factor exceeding the requirement of the code. So they're saying with the four-inch supply line, the six-inch going to the four-inch, they are exceeding the requirements of NFP 13, which is the standard that affects how sprinkler systems are designed.
And they have a separate two-inch line which supplies their-
Domestic needs.
Domestic needs.
Yes. They built tankers out there to be used and they use the two-inch for that, correct?
If they were to be using an eight-inch, they would likely be taking some of that. They would have likely been taking some of that for the domestic use. So it's kind of six of one, half a dozen of the other?
If they put an eight-inch supply into the building and took a two-inch supply off of that to supply their domestic needs, they would not have met the safety factors. And so that's why they chose to put two lines in instead of one line.
So with the different computer modeling that they're able to do today, I wonder if it isn't appropriate that we revisit these policies and see if, see if they might need to be brought up to, to an even more current standard. It looks like it's been 13, 14 years since we've, since we've gone over this.
Councilmember Reese, you had a comment, question?
I have a question.
Marv, or Chief, the, Mr. Martin in his letter states that through the elimination of the post indicator valve and the reduction in the service pipe size, he doesn't feel as though that they've reduced the life safety element of the building. Do you agree with that?
I do agree with that.
So if, if we agree to allow this, I guess I would have to agree with Councilmember Gardner that we need to revisit this. Do we need to, this doesn't have to be changed before we agree to it. We can agree to the variance and then revisit the policy at that time.
Refer the policy to the Public Safety Committee and have them review the appropriateness of, of some of those tighter restrictions that we placed on back in 1993 or whenever we did it.
One other thing you may consider is that there'll be a new code cycle. A code will be adopted probably sometime around May. You could upgrade everything at that time or if you chose to do it earlier as the city administrator suggested, either would be fine.
Councilmember Anderson?
Well, I think that all of my questions have gotten into, just one question. Chief, do you have any qualms or reservations if we were to grant this variance?
At this time, I do not. I believe that in looking at the system, when it comes into the building, it comes in as a six-inch, is reduced down immediately after coming in through the building. You know, three to four feet off the floor, it's reduced to a four-inch. The safety factors of 12 to 31% as is outlined in their design. I also, as my letter states, had the state fire marshal come out and inspect it. And the reason I had him come out and inspect it is that he inspects all over the state. Wanted to make sure he felt comfortable with it before we allowed them to occupy. He felt totally comfortable with it. He told me that he had no problem with it. The only thing he said is you've got your local policy, which was adopted by council. He had no concerns about it. I do not have any concerns about it also. I would state, though, that I do believe that eight-inch water mains need to continue to be put into the, into the ground, but the supply lines going into the buildings, I believe that we can see here through comments that have been made by many council members that that is adequate for the fire suppression for this building.
Well-
But it is a council decision.
In light of what you're saying and in light of the fact that it looks like we're going to be reviewing it and perhaps coinciding with the state policy, I'd make a motion that we grant the variance.
Second. We've had a motion and a second to grant the variance as requested by Martin Mechanical. Is there further comment? If not, is this a majority vote or?
Simple majority.
Simple majority. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign. That motion does pass and I believe there's no other items before us. I will declare this meeting closed.
Thank you.
Now, Kevin, can I just open the meeting again?
We did it formal with a move to recess, so we should maybe move-
Move to reconvene. Second. We have a motion and a second to reconvene the city council meeting. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries.
Councilmember Reese?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, before we go on, shouldn't we have a motion then to refer this-
If you want.
To the Public Works Public Safety for review.
Second. Making the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to review or to submit this review of this ordinance back to the Public Safety Committee. Further comment about that? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number 18 on the agenda, the consideration of council reorganizational resolutions. Who handles that, Kevin?
Are you ready, Schmidt?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the council met in session prior to the meeting tonight. I guess perhaps who chaired that meeting would-
Be the best?
Be the best person to go through the committee assignments.
All right, Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The assignments were as follows. Labor Relations Committee Chair, Councilmember Steve Gardner, Vice Chair, Councilperson Cindy Swenson, and the other two people serving on there from the council would be myself and Councilmember Dennis Anderson along with Michael Schmidt, Steve Okens. And then the Municipal Utilities Commission and Rice Hospital Board would also be attending, in attendance. Finance Committee, the chair would be Councilmember Dennis Anderson, Vice Chair, Rick Fagerly, and the other two councilmembers serving would be Councilmember Jim Dokken and Councilmember Steve Gardner. Community Development Committee would be, the chair would be Bruce DeBleek, Councilmember Bruce DeBleek, Vice Chair, Councilmember Jim Dokken. The other two serving would be Councilperson Cindy Swenson and Councilman Ron Christensen. Public Works and Safety Committee Chair would be myself, Councilmember Reese, and Vice Chair, Councilmember Ron Christensen. And the other two councilmembers serving would be Councilmember Bruce DeBleek and Councilmember Rick Fagerly. Serving on the Woodland Centers would be Councilmember Cindy Swenson. Mid-Minnesota Development Commission, Mr. Mayor, we once again appointed you to that position. The Cable Communications would be myself, Councilmember Reese, and Councilmember Ron Christensen. Community Ed and Rec would be Councilmember Rick Fagerly and Councilperson Cindy Swenson. Rice Hospital Board, Councilmember Jim Dokken has been serving in that capacity and is going to continue to do so. Municipal Utilities Commission, Councilmember DeBleek has been serving in that position for many years and will continue to do so with Councilmember Dokken as an alternate. The Convention and Visitors Bureau, Councilmember Cindy Swenson will serve in that capacity. Human Rights Commission, Councilmember Steve Gardner will be serving on that commission. The Allied Power, again, Councilmember DeBleek, I believe, is even going to be chair. Is that right? Uh, no. No? Okay, that was a different one. That was a different one. I'm sorry. Okay, but he is being reappointed to the Allied Power. Senior Citizens, Councilmember Jim Dokken will be serving in that capacity. Sister City will be myself, Councilmember Reese. Transit Joint Powers Board, Councilmember DeBleek and Councilmember Fagerly. Fire Code Appeals Board, Councilmember Christensen will remain as chair and Vice Chair, Councilmember Dennis Anderson. The EDC will be Councilmember Anderson and Councilmember Christensen and Mayor, yourself, Mayor Heike. Design Center will be Councilmember Steve Gardner. And do I mention the publication, meeting times, I suppose, huh? Do I do those at the same time?
Sure.
Is that a different resolution?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, and then, and Mayor Pro Tem is another resolution. Okay, fine. So that, I would introduce the resolution in that form, Mr. Mayor.
Second. There's a motion and a second for a resolution for all of the noted committee assignments. Roll call?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
And we will, I'll introduce a resolution of appointment as mayor pro tem for Councilmember Reese, myself.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for a resolution for Councilmember Reese to serve as mayor pro tem. Roll call?
Councilmember Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Now, do you want the resolutions for the other assignments, Kevin? And are they, are all three of them on one or are they separate?
We have them three separate.
Three separate, okay. So first of all, I'll introduce the resolution. Mr. Mayor, appointing the West Central Tribune as the formal publication for the city council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution that appoints the West Central Tribune as a legal publication for the Wilmer City Council. Roll call?
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
And the next resolution would be for the council's regular meeting times would be the first and third Monday nights at 7:00 PM. Mr. Mayor?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for a resolution that sets the regular meeting time of the city council for the first and third Monday at 7:00 PM. Roll call?
Councilmember Doc?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
And last, I believe the correct term is responsible authority and we would appoint our city administrator, Mick Schmidt, in that capacity. Mr. Mayor, so I'll introduce a resolution for that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution that appoints Mr. Michael Schmidt as a responsible authority for the city council. The city of Wilmer?
Collection and dissemination of data.
That's for data practices.
Okay, for data, for data practices.
He looked a little stunned, Mr.-
All right. Roll call?
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
You were stunned for what reason? You didn't think Mick was responsible?
That sounded like a new position we just established. Is that it?
That is it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Number 19, the consideration of a resolution establishing fees for city services, permits and licenses and rental rates of equipment. This is for the purpose of creating billings and grants, things like that?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as we do each year, we are considering a resolution tonight that would set fees for various public works activities, community ed rec programs, planning and development services, fire department fees. The list is three or four pages long. It's included in your packet. The fees, for the most part, have remained unchanged. There are a few exceptions and those are underlined and would reflect the proposed increases. Staff's recommendation as the council adopt the resolution as presented.
Thank you, Mick. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to establish these, for a resolution that establishes all these fees. Further comment? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mick, I see that the only fees that have been changed, it seems they all appear under a planning and development services. Is that, is there a reason for that? Everything else stayed the same except for that department?
Each department is asked to submit proposals which are included in the overall resolution each year and those were the only recommended changes that I received.
I guess I'm curious as to why, just take for instance, under plumbing, commercial, additional fees for water service line, sewer service line. I don't believe, I believe it's just paperwork. I don't think they actually go out to see that the service line is there because it's going to be there no matter what when they do their other inspections. I don't agree with those. And I had a question on the, you've got equipment under the fire department. They don't rent that equipment out, do they, or is it to other facilities? Is that what that's for?
That's what we would charge for a call that was outside our service- That's what we would charge for, uh, a call up that was outside our service territory or under some unusual circumstance like that.
Okay.
No, we don't rent them out.
I didn't think so. That was it, thank you.
All right, any other comments?
There's a typo in the introductory paragraph, the second one says 2006, we're at 2007.
Thank you, Rich. Anything else? Okay, we have a resol, or, uh, who else? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I forgot one item. The, uh, when do we review the, uh, permit fees for new construction homes, commercial and that? Is there a separate month review for that?
Well, not, uh, as my understanding, those are set by policy or, uh, percentage of the building code fee that's adopted by the state. That's a, pretty much an ongoing thing unless the council wanted to, uh, change its policy.
Actually, the state law says that the city, each jurisdiction can set their own fee schedule. It isn't really, presently, we're following the state one.
A percentage of the state one?
A percentage of the state. I forget which code it is, 94, 2002, 2003, but, um, each jurisdiction has the capability of setting their own fees, and, uh, I, that's why I asked if we were going to review, review them, evidently not.
Well, we, we are not proposing any changes to that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Fagerly?
Just a question on the ICE rental. Is that what the Hockey Association is paying now, $110 an hour, or are they getting a break? They're getting a break? They aren't. Okay. And the Blue Line?
I think it varies on which ICE we're talking about, whether it's prime time in the Civic Center or non-prime time in either the Civic Center or the Blue Line Building is probably a reduced rate.
Okay. Do you know what a timeline is for negotiating a new contract with them, or?
I don't recall how, how long that agreement is in place.
I think it was a three-year, but I'm not sure when it started.
I believe it was a three-year. This may very well be the last, but I can double-check that.
Okay.
Anyone else? We have a motion, and it's been seconded for this resolution. Roll call?
Councilmember DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. We'll go to miscellaneous before we go to committee meetings. Under miscellaneous, um, Mick, do you want to talk about this resolution for the F-14 Tomcat?
Well, Mr. Mayor, it's, um, I'm not, um, suggesting at this point a resolution, but rather a simple motion. You'll recall, I believe it was at the last city council meeting, when the, um, council voted to participate in a matching program to get the F-14 fighter jet, uh, jet out to Wilmer as a static display, uh, and at the same time, uh, there, the, uh, council action designated the, I believe, excess, uh, 2006 excess building fees as a source of revenue. I distributed a letter tonight from the Builders Association, um, I guess in a sense challenging the use of any, quote, excess building permit fees for this type of activity. And so what I would suggest to the council is a simple way of resolving this matter is to pass a motion and in terms of, uh, our matching obligations for relocating the F-14 jet, designate the use of 2006 fund balances. Now, many will, may say that, you know, this is just kind of finagling the, the dollars that are available, and probably to some extent it is, but the, um, because the 2006 fund balance will be made up, uh, in part by, um, any, uh, excess building permit fees that are generated, but it does become a, a bigger part, uh, or a part of a bigger, uh, source of revenue, and, um, I think it gets us away from specifically identifying the billing permit fees as the source.
All right. So have you prepared a resolution for that?
Well, it's a more, a simple motion, Mr. Mayor. That's what was done at the last council meeting. The motion would be simply to, uh, provide the city's matching share for the F-14 jet relocation from 2006 fund balance.
All right. Councilmember Anderson? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, use, uh, 2006 fund balances to fund the F-14 project. Councilmember Reese?
Just a question in regards to, uh, the order. Do we have to recognize the fact that we are not, I mean, didn't we make a motion before to utilize billing per, billing fees, or not?
Building permit fees in the minutes.
If we did so, don't, we shouldn't say...
It would be to move to amend the previous council action and then what was stated.
Is that your motion then, Dennis?
Yes.
If I understand, you're wanting to make sure we, um...
Nullify the previous action and recognize the new action.
We'll have that motion accordingly.
Okay, that's what the intent of the motion maker is, and, Ron, you seconded that?
To amend.
To amend the decision from a previous council meeting. All right, any other comments about that? Uh, is that a simple motion then, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is this, uh, resolution for the wastewater treatment plant for $477,000. Mick?
Mr. Mayor, we, uh, have received officially now the, from the United States Environmental Protection Agency, our grant for, um, $477,900, and this is, uh, money that had been earmarked, I believe, back in 2005 and was intended to, um, reimburse us for expenses incurred in preparing our facilities plan for the new wastewater treatment plant. We now, uh, just today, received the paperwork for that grant, and so I'm requesting that the, um, city council adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor and myself to accept the, or to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for a resolution to sign the agreement for the federal grant money to come to the city of Wilmer for the wastewater treatment plant. Further comment? Roll call? Or Councilmember Fagerly?
Is this a different one than what the lobbyists talked about on Saturday then?
Yeah, the one, the lobbyist, well, there's actually, there were two of them. One, this is the one from 2005, uh, the one they were talking about that we lost, uh, this last year, uh, was it for a smaller amount?
Three hundred thousand.
Two different grants.
Okay. All right, anything else? Roll call?
Councilmember Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Councilmember Gardner, you had a request?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have, uh, signed up to attend the League of Minnesota Cities, uh, Officials Conference, uh, regarding, uh, on January 26th and 27th, where the topic is, uh, land use issues. The, uh, cost of the, uh, conference would be, uh, probably slightly less than $500.
That's for information only?
Uh, to my knowledge, it is. I, uh, I don't know if there's a threshold by which we'd need actual, uh, council approval for that or not.
Uh, as far as I know, Mr. Mayor, and maybe Rich knows differently, the, there's a, a new, uh, state law or, that requires us to announce when elected officials are, um, attending conferences or traveling.
I thought that applied only to out-of-state travel.
Uh, I don't believe so, but I can confirm that for you.
All right. Thank you for that information. Um, we, uh, I want to bring to the attention of the council again, and also our citizens here in Wilmer, that next Monday is a national holiday for Martin Luther King. Uh, it's called the Martin Luther King Holiday. There are two events that day, one that starts at 7:30 in the morning at the local YMCA. This is an annual event. It's sponsored by the YMCA to honor Dr. Martin Luther King. It's open to the public. It'll be held, uh, right at the YMCA center. Uh, there'll be a few short speeches, there's usually some music, um, and some awards might also be given at that meeting. In the evening of, uh, January 15th, there is a very, uh, special event called the, uh, Celebrate of Dr. Martin Luther King Holiday. Uh, this is an event that's a first-time, uh, event. It's being held at Ridgewater Community College. It's a special evening of Somali cultural arts and history. There's a gourmet, uh, Somali dinner being, uh, prepared, and it's a fundraiser to help launch the Somali Community Center here in Wilmer. There are, uh, three featured, uh, presenters. There'll be music, and, uh, tickets are available for this event by contacting, uh, either, uh, the West Central Integrative Collaborative, which is located at the school district building, or by contacting Abdi Du, who is the liaison to the Somali, uh, community, uh, that works with the Integration Collaborative and the city of Wilmer. So the benefits of this event are to go to the African Community Services Operations as they are trying to set up and organize a Somali Community Center here in Wilmer. It should be quite an evening. Uh, many people are being recognized for their efforts that night. There'll be good entertainment, good education, and good food. Uh, please, uh, think about coming to that event. And for the council members, uh, you are certainly all encouraged and welcome to attend. Audrey Peterson at City Hall needs to know of your intentions, uh, by tomorrow, so if you think you're going, would like to go, please contact Audrey. She'll make the necessary arrangements for you. Again, this is next Monday night. Uh, it starts, I believe, there's kind of a social time from 5:00 to 6:00. Uh, the dinner's at 6:00 and the program starts at 7:00. Uh, let's see, there's a couple of other announcements. One is from our police department. Uh, the next cops meeting is going to be on Tuesday, January 16th, at the Wilmer Senior Citizen Center. Uh, this is our community-oriented and policing meeting. Uh, they'll be talking about, uh, officers Dell Wagner and Michael Johnkey will give a presentation on gang activity in Wilmer. Please invite a friend or a neighbor to, uh, come to this meeting with you. Again, uh, it's Tuesday evening, January 16th at 7:00 PM at the Wilmer Senior Citizen Center.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just a question, is that a citywide or just, uh, Ward 1?
Uh, thank you, let's see.
Oh, it's a Ward meeting.
It is, it's a Ward 1, okay.
Right, it's Ward 1, but open to the public. Also, um, I want to, uh, recognize and, and offer our support and condolences to the family of, uh, of one of our department heads, Bruce Peterson. Uh, his father died this week, and the funeral was today at Bethel Church. Uh, we certainly extend our condolences and our support for himself, uh, his, uh, wife and children, and his, uh, other family members in the loss of their father this week. Now, uh, we will go to council committee meeting dates. Uh, City Finance Committee?
Finance Committee will not meet, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Public Works Public Safety?
Public Works Public Safety will be meeting next Tuesday, the 16th, 4:45, Mr. Mayor.
January 16th, Public Works Public Safety, 4:45. Community Development?
Uh, Community Development is, uh, not scheduled at this time.
All right, and Labor, Councilmember Gardner?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Labor Committee will meet on Wednesday, uh, the 17th at 4:45.
Labor Committee, January 17th, 4:45. Are there any other announcements to come before the council tonight? If not, uh, it's time for a motion to adjourn. So moved. We have a motion? Second. And it's been seconded. We are adjourned.